For this special called meeting. But I'm gonna make one thing clear. And that is, this meeting is not open to the public for discussion or comment. If there is any interruption during the conversation that we have up here, I will ask you to leave. If you do not leave, there's a deputy sheriff back there, I'll ask him to escort you out. Now, to proceed with this meeting. It was called for the purpose of the vote that was taken last month to stop the T-Dot project along Highway 48 from the three-way stop north to the red light there at the school. When T-Dot received word of the outcome of that vote, they presented the city with a alternative. Which seemed to be, the biggest controversy was the 40-foot entrance or access into Gene's Body Shop that would or could prevent him from being able to access two of his bays. The alternative to that is to take the 40-foot entrance away and put in two 30-foot entrances on each end. Therefore, it would give him access to all the bays as he requested. So, I felt with that alternative and what the state had changed, I felt that it's our responsibility to reassess the decision that was made last month. I know that it affects others, but to me, when I look back and I saw that the previous council and mayor had unanimously approved this project to move forward, and it did. And then we were called in and we were asked to stop it. And basically, that's what you voted on to do. But then the state has come in with a alternative that will, I think, benefit, of course, Gene's Body Shop for one. But when I look at turning down $3.5 million grant that T-Dot has offered this city, then it's going to cause some consequences. And I mean, I realize that, I think, it was said during that first meeting that it would not affect any future grants that we apply for, for T-Dot. But then I was told a month ago by grant writers that they may not turn your application down, but it would probably be put at the bottom of the list. So, basically, what they were telling me is that if anything comes up in the future that we want T-Dot to do or fix on our state highways through the city, it's pretty much gonna be put under the table and they're not gonna bother with it because we just turned down a $3.5 million grant. So, that's the reason that I called this meeting. I wanted to discuss it with y'all, talk about the changes that were made, and to get y'all's input and see what you think about that. Or if you have any questions that I might be able to answer, or the project manager that's sitting up here might be able to answer.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, I guess, and I'm new, so maybe this is a silly question, but, you know, we voted on this last month and essentially, you know, I won't speak for everyone, I'll speak for myself. It wasn't an easy vote, and I think everybody knows that. I guess I'm just, the right word, I'm not sure what the right word is, maybe confused as to when a vote is processed versus when it's not. So, essentially, if we vote tonight something different or the same thing, you know, does that, what determines whenever a vote is legitimate or not?
Well, the only reason that this was even being brought back up was the new proposal that the state gave us.
Right, and we were told that the state was not going to give us an alternate solution, so.
Well...
I mean, that's what we voted on, right? Is that fair to say? Whenever we had our last meeting, we were told during the meeting that the state ordered to die.
They said they were gonna wait for the results of the vote before, or to see if there was any alternatives.
Maybe I'm misremembering.
But if this council votes to stop it, and the state cannot provide any other alternative to help resolve any issues that anyone has with it, then it'll stop and we'll pay the money that we owe. I just have a hard time throwing away the taxpayers' money of this small town. And that's basically what we'd be doing.
Well, if I can bring up one more topic while you're talking about that.
Yeah.
And make sure this is correct. We have already paid 29K, this, I'm going off of November's numbers.
Right.
We have paid 29K so far for this project, is that correct? Roughly?
Roughly. We've got it.
To continue the project, I believe we were told 405K for this specific phase? Just this phase, right? 405K?
That's our portion of $3.5 million grant, yes.
Okay. To stop the project, we were told we would owe 280K.
Correct.
So, while I, just speaking my own opinion, but while I don't enjoy spending 280K, just like I didn't enjoy spending it in November, I mean, we're gonna save, we're gonna save money versus continuing the project, not to mention the fact that I don't know how many other phases are after it, but we have been told that there are other phases, correct? The plan is to try to take it to the ball field, was that discussed, right?
I think it is projected, but that's no guarantee.
Sure. So, and I have spoken to other business owners that could potentially be affected by sidewalks, and unanimously, they have all told me they would not want them as well because it would affect whatever, the parking entrances for big trucks, what have, so essentially, the way I look at it is, you know, I personally voted to not continue the project because it affected people and businesses. If we decide, or I guess it can be voted on again to continue this project, we're essentially saying we will continue all of the projects because we cannot show any, in my opinion, I'm not gonna show special treatment to the next business owner that has an issue with it. Or the next, or the next just resident. And it's not always just about businesses, obviously, so I think that's definitely something that needs to be taken into the thought process of what exactly we're doing there. Again, I am a finance guy, I do not like, especially, you know, this isn't just, this isn't a business, you know, this is taxpayer money. I don't like spending my own money or anyone else's own money and essentially not getting anything out of it. But we would be spending less money to stop the project versus continuing the project.
True. But we would be getting nothing out of it.
Agreed.
Whereas you spend the 400,000, you get improvement to the intersection at the three-way stop, you get sidewalks for people to use to get them off the side of the road, and, you know, I just, a sidewalk gives a city walkability. It gives the people the opportunity to walk safely to wherever they want to go if they choose to walk. I mean, that's how I look at it. And I look at, not only for safety reasons, but I look at it for being attractive. I mean, I can drive down the streets of Dixon or the streets of White Bluff where they have sidewalks on both sides. And to me, it makes it a lot more attractive than looking over at a two-foot deep ditch, you know, I just, that's me. That's me.
And I, sorry, go ahead. I don't wanna be the one that comes to the...
No, I mean, everybody'll get their...
You know, I've developed in White Bluff, and, you know, they have sidewalks on both sides, and, you know, I've developed several projects, so I've dealt with some water issues, and looking at the plans, you know, it's gonna be a big benefit to Sweet Charlotte. I mean, they have, look what they deal with when it rains. I mean, I've looked at the plan, it's gonna benefit them a lot too. It floods their business, it goes out the back door, and, you know, it benefits them a lot too. You know, in White Bluff, like you said, there's sidewalks on both sides and the streets are lined with people, I mean, it's...
I thought T-Dot said that it would not affect Sweet Charlotte in any way.
I think they said it would affect, it would help the water that was on that side of the road.
That side of the road.
Which they had runoff from that side of the road.
Right, crosses over if you watch when it rains.
Sure.
Runs right down, catches the building, runs through their building.
It won't do anything for the other side of the road. It may help the water that's crossing over.
Are they not putting in a larger coverage?
Going from 18 to 24.
Like, see what I'm saying, you know, that's on the plan, if you look at it and see what you can...
So, if I, am I allowed to say what someone here has said to me?
Yeah.
I would think so.
The public can't speak, but I can speak.
Yeah, yeah.
I did my due diligence, I had people call me, I'm sure others did as well. I will say that Mr. Freddie Miller with Gene's did reach out to me and let me know, hey, I've seen the new proposal, it doesn't change my functionality any on the project, I don't see it as necessary. So, I'm just throwing that out there.
I could show you otherwise, but, in a text message, that was, I mean, I'm just saying.
We can let him, I mean, can he not say it for himself?
Uh-uh, no, this is not, this meeting's not open for the public.
Okay.
But I can show you otherwise.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't wanna step on you. Yeah, I think Freddie and them in the beginning, if it were flattened, also flattened at Lunchbox, but the state came back and said, no, flatten.
That's not what the text message says from the state.
That's right, the state does not go flatten.
Right, but that's not what, I mean, the agreement was after the 2 30-foot entrances.
Okay.
It was made.
I don't know if anyone else has gone out, like Turtle has gone out and talked, I've gone out and talked to people. You know, I've also talked to people outside of the city. And I haven't had one person to tell me, hot dog, we're getting a sidewalk. I have not had one person, I had one person to approach me at the tree lighting Saturday night that said, hey, we're losing this money, we can't lose this money. But it wasn't, hot dog, we're getting a sidewalk. None of it was. And it was also that we're, he was told that we were gonna lose grants for 10 years. Now, Lisa, at the meeting, I heard from your mouth that we are a small town, we are a small population, you love to give grants to people like us, so I'm sorry, I'm going with the public, they don't want it. I hate losing the money, yeah, it's bad, but the public doesn't want it. I have not had somebody call me and say, please, Linda, please.
I've had several, I've had several parts of calls that we need the sidewalks, I mean, we need to do Lester Grove.
He has not talked to me at all.
He called me, I've had several, so, you know, y'all are crazy.
And then I'm going on his side.
Well, I know, and he still wants one because he knows the benefit of it to the city, you know, I mean, it's...
I mean, let's face it, probably...
And taking it from her, I mean, you know, she might, they might say that you're not gonna lose any more future grants, but you turn down a grant, what are you gonna do? They're not gonna fool with you.
What, a $3.5 million grant?
Well, you're gonna throw the back of this, you're never gonna get another grant again.
That's what, I mean, that's...
And, you know...
That's what Amanda Michael told me.
I dealt with the council in White Bluff on the Dairy Clinic, and it approved, and they wanted to change the entrances, they said that it was gonna, you know, back up traffic, and, you know, we finally got them to realize that it wasn't. And then once it was all done, everybody's perfect, like, this works perfect, it's perfect. And that's usually what'll happen with the sidewalks, when they go in, if they go in, if they get approved, everybody'll say, well, it didn't affect nothing, you know, we got future grant money, we can, you know, we can do later on. That's, it's always just the initial shock, and then, once you get them, you're like, well, that's great, we done that, you know, I'm glad we didn't throw the taxpayers' money away.
Yeah.
And to vote, you know, I understand Freddie, I mean, I understand, you know, I understand his business, but for the interest of Charlotte, you know, if you give up that money and give up the grant, I mean, that's, you're not voting for the interest of Charlotte, you're voting for personal or friends or something, and you're not elected to do that, you're elected to represent everybody.
That's why I went out and talked to these.
Well, you shouldn't, nobody, nobody wants Lester Grove, he's a business...
He has not talked to, he was last year tonight.
Well, he talked to me, I'm just telling you, he talked to me and said that, hey, we need the sidewalks, that's good for the future of Charlotte, you know. I'm just telling you that he did, and there's other, you know, there's other owners that have told me to do it.
Can I ask, has anybody else had someone say, please put the sidewalks?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm talking to Turtle.
I've had several people say that they may have not voted for the project on the front end, but since we're this far into it, we can't stop now. I've had several people tell me that. Now, I've not had anybody say, hot dog sidewalks, like you were talking about, but I have had several people say, we can't throw away, what is it, basically six months tax revenue?
Exactly.
I mean, isn't there a tax revenue of about 600,000 a year? And I didn't say much at the last meeting because I know it was a hard book for everybody, it was a hard book for me, and I wanted to, I want everybody to hold their conscience, but I just, the reason I voted to continue it is because we've got 1,700-ish people in the city of Charlotte, and I just have trouble looking at 1,700 people and saying, hey, I'm gonna throw away your next six months of taxes, you're gonna pay it for nothing. And I understand the hardships it makes on some, I feel bad about that, and we'll do whatever we can to make it better, but I just can't look at the other 1,000, 1,000, 98 people and say, you're gonna pay taxes for six months for nothing to happen.
I would also like to add too, and Mr. Mayor, you mentioned also the previous council voting, you know, essentially starting this process, the whole project. I was told by multiple formal council members that they never saw a map of where the sidewalks would go, who it would affect.
That's...
I'm just, again, I'm just saying...
I know, I understand, but they're not telling you the truth.
Okay.
Because they saw...
I saw it, I saw it for the first time on October, at our October meeting right over there.
Yeah, right.
And I have heard from, again, I was contacted by multiple people that that was the first time they had seen it. So, I mean, you know, and I don't know what went into the previous votes, obviously, I wasn't here and I wasn't part of it. You know, I, it would be hard for me to say that people voted for it without seeing a map and knowing, but I'm just telling you what I was told.
Yeah.
Did they see a map, General?
Yeah, we should go right here where it was presented.
It was still in engineering and construction, but this was sent to the last council in 2020. This was given to...
When?
In 2020.
Give me a date.
May.
You know, we didn't get a lot of stuff.
And this was posted on social media.
I'm not always on Facebook.
It was posted in the paper, this was where they were given.
I'm not gonna talk bad about prior councils or prior mayors, but we were not always given everything. And we were told, it'll work out, don't worry about it.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay. What was the reason we made the plan to put the sidewalk in? What was the main reason that y'all gave us the grant with the sidewalk?
The pictures that we received, the state with the application showing the kids walking on the state route to get to school.
Okay. We've talked, and I asked you, how are you gonna get those kids across the street? Okay? And they said, there's no plans for it. So now, what I see is we're making a sidewalk for those kids to come down, get halfway down and dart across. They got a nice, easy walk on that side of the street up until the point where they gotta cross, like, similar to where Turtle lives, they, streets back there, that's the only place I know that kids are. If they lived in the square or close to the square, they come down Humphrey Street. So now, we still haven't resolved the safety of the kids because they're still gonna be crossing that road. They won't put a crosswalk on that sidewalk by the red light either. So even to get the kids going down Bentley Highway, they still will not put a crosswalk there.
We can do that.
That is not...
The city can do that. The city can do that on a state highway inside the city limits.
Okay. The second thing I had an issue was, if you're putting cross lines on the streets, like, when they come off the sidewalk, they gotta cross the street, why couldn't they do that completely across Gene's Body Shop? Why is it going from a 40-foot to two 30-foots or whatever it is? Why couldn't they just put a straight line going completely across?
I asked that question too, and the designers gave me some convoluted response that I didn't care for, so I went to someone else that could give me a better answer, and it was my leadership, and they found an alternative. And we can make his, leave his whole driveway exactly like it is, and there will be a, there won't be the two 30-foot entrances, we can do it, leave his driveway entrance exactly as it is, and the sidewalks would be flush. So he would still have complete entrances and everything, and the sidewalk would be flush all the way around through there. That would be our final offer on the situation. I have a picture of a project we did in another location in another city where we had to do the same thing for that business owner.
So is that the proposal now, is to do the two 30-foot entrances and whatever's in the middle be flush?
The final offer to Gene's Body Shop and City Council is, is that we do not change any of his access, it stays like it is, there will be a concrete sidewalk put in flush, so he still drives over just like he does right now.
Okay, as of December the 9th, there was an email, it's a, email, it's a raised sidewalk. He has not gotten anything else.
He did not. I just got this stuff before I left the office today and was told that I could present it to you all as the final offer.
What about Lunchbox?
We were never told anything about, any issues at Lunchbox for their driveway or anything. We were only told about the issues at Gene's Body Shop.
I haven't heard of issues in Lunchbox, have you?
I mean, they have Spencer Street to steal access to park over on that side. I mean, I don't know how much, I don't know how much double parking you could have with two vehicles nose to nose up there, where one pulls off of 48, one off of Spencer. But I would think that, I don't know, I don't know the...
So that's new to me, that we are gonna lower the sidewalks like they want.
Yeah, well, I wasn't aware of that neither, is that...
It's new today, right now.
Would that be a possibility?
It is.
At Court Side, Court Side, can they?
I do not know, because like I said, we were only told about the issue at Gene's Body Shop, that would be something I'd have to take back to my leadership. But this is what they did, yeah, this is what they did in another city where they were, that business owner was gonna lose access to his bays as well, so they just put a flush sidewalk in.
My thing is, if that flushed, everything was the past or whatever, in the future, when it goes up the road, is it gonna be flushed for the other businesses as well?
I don't know. I can't answer that, I don't know.
It's like I told, I told a young man today that the next phase of the project probably won't happen while I'm in this world.
It's three to five years for grant process.
I mean, you know...
Of course, and that's a whole nother vote even, to start that.
Yeah, right.
We can say, no, we're stopping here.
Yeah.
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 But to that point, that's kind of the point that I talked about earlier, it's hard for me to affect these small businesses and residents and then tell the next group...
I'm with you there. I agree, but the issue is not something we voted on, it's a spot.
Sure.
It's just, what's the best way to move forward in the spot that we're in.
And I don't know how leadership or the designers would do any future phases with regards to, you know, the raised sidewalk or a flush sidewalk, but certainly, there would be precedence to where they could have an argument to where they could have a flush sidewalk as well, so, that would be a good argument to have in the future, you know, if they come through and say, we're only gonna give you a 50-foot driveway or what have you, and you come back and say, well, you know, you found an alternative, you know, at the previous location, so is there a way that you can find, you know, the same alternative here too?
I mean, Court Side or Lunchbox, whatever, they need definitely more, I mean, they're over flooded now with what little parking they do have, and you can't, I just don't feel like you could take away a whole strip of their parking when it's already...
Yeah, I haven't seen the plan, I didn't look at the plans around Lunchbox because, like I said, we were only told about the issue at Gene's Body Shop, so that's the only area that we looked at.
Did you sit in there? So, I met with Freddie on this, and, you know, this is kind of what it goes, you know, I was thinking that if y'all could do this, he probably be fine with it, backing out of his shop, and I just got, I didn't thank y'all for doing it.
So, we gave him the proposal of the two 30-foot entrances, and we never heard anything back from him. So, they did not give him this proposal because they were waiting to hear back from him on the other proposal, and he never responded back, and I double-checked before I left the office. And they said they still had not heard from him.
Well, to me, this solves the issue, and it helps Sweet Charlotte with the water issue, and, you know, if we keep finding other issues to not vote for, then we're not voting for the best interest of Charlotte. I don't even know if I wanna be on this council if we vote like that, I mean, you know, I don't even know if I wanna be.
How is this, they're saying the water's coming across?
I'm telling you that I looked at the plan, now, I'm not saying I'm a professional, but you know, I dealt with some water, and they're putting in bigger covers, look like it's gonna catch a lot of the water that's crossing the road and running into its business, is what I see. Now, am I an expert? No, but I have developed and dealt with water before, and that's what I see, that it's gonna benefit him, and now we got flat sidewalks in front of him. I mean, I don't really know what the issue is now, and we, she kind of resolved it, and if, you know, it gets voted down, it's for personal benefit, it's not for the benefit of Charlotte. I mean, I don't have a hard time sitting on a council going forward when, you know, she just solved the remedy, and this is ludicrous to give the taxpayers' money away, I mean, I'm just, I'm dumbfounded by it.
I, I mean, I could be misremembering because I think that Sweet Charlotte, the Sweet Charlotte guy was here and asked, the owner, asked T-Dot if it would affect his drainage situation, and I could've swore they told him no.
And they did, if I remember right too, because I'm obviously rolling off memory, they said it would not affect his side of the street, but it could affect the water that's crossing over the street.
Sure, it could affect the water that comes across.
There's a lot of water that crosses the street.
If you've lived here, there were floods, you go off the hill, I mean...
And Melinda, he's for the sidewalk. The owner of Sweet Charlotte is for the sidewalk.
He wants the sidewalk.
I mean, if you, if you want me to give these people your number to call you...
My number is, I've told Jennifer, she can give it to anybody she wants to. I'm an open book.
Wouldn't you give Lester and the girl?
And anybody that's asked me for it, I've given it to them because you've said I could give it away, so. But I won't, I won't, I wanna give it to Nikki, and I don't know if she called you or not.
Nikki?
Bus Garage.
I just wanna reiterate one thing too. I'm a little bit still confused as to what we voted on last month, because I thought we voted on to stop the project last month. So if we vote again, I just, what makes that vote legitimate versus last month? I'm still confused on that.
We voted to stop and waited for their, to see if they could give us an alternative or a different option. And now they've given us actually two options. And now they've given us actually two options.
So we-
But solve the problem.
We essentially, we essentially voted to stop but did not stop.
Right.
Fair.
Right, right.
It's just...
And it's my understanding that when we voted to stop it, although the state did not get a letter from the city saying we are stopping it, that you have, that everyone is moving forward and we are being charged every day, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody got any, have you had any bills? I'd like to see the bills.
They're working on right of way, so they're waiting on their, um, right of way appraisals to come in, so we're waiting on the, um, the appraisal companies have not submitted their invoices or anything yet.
But the, when we were talking before, it was gonna be two hundred and eighty thousand, that was for at, up to-
As of that month, not, not last month's vote, but the month before.
Okay. So, for two months now-
There's additional charges on there.
But we don't know if that's a thousand dollars or twenty thousand?
I do, I do not, but I can see if I can get something more up to date. I don't know, like I said, I don't know if it's gonna include any of the appraisal reports from the appraisal companies or anything, because I don't know if they've submitted those, but I can definitely get you what we have on the books as of-
The two hundred and eighty thousand, that would be interesting to see what that was spent on.
Okay.
I do have a person or two that walks back and forth, um, in the salon parking lot, and they are walking in the middle of our parking lot, but they're not gonna walk anywhere near the highway. And, um, I've heard, uh, you know, a few people say, well, why would you, like, who wants to walk on forty-eight even on the sidewalk? But whenever I see him walking through the middle all the way down to work, um, I'm thinking, well, he obviously-
I drop a kid off at Charlotte Elementary and Charlotte Middle School every day, or my wife does, either way. I've seen one picture, I think Jennifer sent it, of one student walking to school. Now, in the evenings, at three o'clock, I see him walking this sidewalk all the time down to the square, that's a neat little trick parents do where they park here and they don't have to wait in line, and they have their kids walk down these sidewalks over here to the square. Uh, I have seen kids walk that way in the evenings, I have for sure seen that. I, I'm not gonna, I mean, this is me personally, I don't want my kids walking down forty-eight. I don't think many people want their kids walking down forty-eight, and, and a sidewalk's not gonna stop someone from hitting you. I mean, it's just, I, I, I understand it gives you a little bit more room, um, but I, I, again, I just, I don't know the real percentage, and I'm not gonna act like I know the real percentage of how many people this affects as far as who it benefits. I mean, it, it's gotta be less than ten percent of our population, I would say, maybe?
You don't know.
That might be high, I don't know. I, I don't see anyone walking down forty-eight because they want to.
And have you seen how they walk down the sidewalk? Running down the sidewalk?
Oh, the kids.
Hanging off the sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
That one coming from the school.
Well, I think you would see more use than you do now. I use it, but, you know, I'm grown.
Sure.
And, uh, but, and I, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want a, a young kid walking down a side, that sidewalk either. And I think any parent who's, who's a parent is not gonna let their little kid walk down a sidewalk.
Not by themselves.
You know, but I see how the sidewalks are, are used, you know, in other cities.
Sure.
And, and like I said, how it makes them more attractive and all that, and, but there again, you know?
And I think it's different, if we had three or four businesses through there that you could wa- like if Sweet Charlotte was on this side, or if we had a restaurant or something like that, that, you know, you could walk door to door from or something like that, I, I understand, and that's kinda how White Bluff is set up, they have a bunch of mom and pop shops through there that you can pop in and, and out of.
And it's flat.
I mean, no offense, no offense, right.
It's a big difference.
No offense to Mr. Freddie, but I don't wanna walk to Gene's Body Shop for no reason, I don't wanna go to Gene's anyway, just, you only go there when you have to.
You mean, you're going to a tour.
Right, right, you know, I mean, you know, I mean, there's no, I, I don't see any benefit to the small businesses either of where it gets there, I mean, again, it's not all about that, but I'm just, I'm trying to find the focus group of people that this does benefit positively, and I feel like that percentage is very small.
May I speak?
Yeah.
As someone that has been working for the city for twenty years, we have installed two sidewalks. We started with this sidewalk because there was a few students walking to the square. We applied for a grant, we won, we were awarded the grant, the sidewalk was built. Since we installed that sidewalk, it's used constantly as you guys see now. It started with one or two kids. Just put safety first. The sidewalk on forty-nine was done without a grant by Bill Davis at the request of Melinda Miller at the DA's office, because they had to walk on the side of the road and could not get to the square.
And go back and forth to the courthouse, you're right.
And they asked for a safe route to get to the courthouse. So Mayor Davis and City Council of Charlotte built them a sidewalk to get from the DA's office to the square.
Because we also had carts we were pulling with fouls, but, with that said, now that we have the criminal justice, I haven't seen anybody using that sidewalk, and have you seen it lately? It is in poor shape with debris, and it's pretty darn dirty. Now, I'm imagining on the main highway, the city's gonna have to keep that up, and I'm looking at Chad, because Chad, you and you guys are gonna have to keep that up. How are we gonna keep the debris out of the street and off of the sidewalk? We don't have a, a street sweeper like Dixon does.
No.
But just take a look at-
Yeah, I've got my hair pushed from-
What is the liability of a sidewalk for the city? If someone's walking on the sidewalk and gets hit by a car or whatever?
So that's, there's a, that's an open-ended question because it all depends on the scenario, are they drunk?
Sure.
Uh, are they-
Well, let's, let me give a different one. What if someone trips on the sidewalk and falls?
Well, it all depends on the condition of the sidewalk, sure, sure, like anything else, did they trip over, something was there, did they trip because it was broken up? We can get into a number of scenarios.
Okay. I, I, and I'm asking that, just, I have no clue, it was just something that just came to my head.
So I guess the only way that we would be able to pursue it is to have somebody make a motion to rescind last month's vote on a second, and to wait for, or if nobody wants to do that, then I guess we'll-
Send a formal request?
Uh-huh, send a formal request.
Can we state in the meeting that both criterias that were requested were met?
Uh-huh.
City can do a crosswalk for Ricky's request, and T-Dot is willing to make it flat for Freddie to access all base.
Well, everything's met that we was arguing over, I don't, you know, if you keep making up other stuff, then I don't understand, but I don't understand it, you know, but, if it's all, I mean, what, what are we doing here?
Oh, well, then if, I would also like it be, to be stated that we actually are saving taxpayer money by spending two hundred and eighty versus four hundred and five.
How, how do you save money? By throwing money away and not getting anything out of it?
The total dollars spent to stop the project would be three hundred roughly, and I don't know what's been added, but it would be three hundred and nine thou- roughly, three hundred and nine thousand dollars to stop the project and four oh five to continue.
Yes, but the four oh five buys you something to three hundred on.
Agree. But as far as a total dollar standpoint, we are saving roughly a hundred thousand dollars to taxpayer money.
We're getting nothing in return.
I am a financier.
You know, I also, uh, which you would have.
I've been in the middle of projects many a times in my life where it was like, okay, maybe it's not worth it, and you-
Nothing in return, I don't know where you get nothing.
But do, do you not think this needs to be run like a business?
Exactly.
The city?
I mean, sure, I, I-
And it's, and it's good business to throw away, throw away two hundred and eighty thou- or actually three hundred and ten thousand dollars.
I think that you have to make, business decisions are business decisions, I, I agree with that. And I think that, sure, you have to make some business decisions in government, sure, but at the end of the day, we're serving the people too. I mean, we've had people come to every meeting and voiced their opinions. Not one person has come to a meeting and said, please, continue this project. I know y'all, everyone here has had somebody contact them, not one person here has stood up and stomped their foot and said, this must go on, has to.
Well, no, no, because any interruption, I'm gonna have them dismayed.
October, November?
Right.
Any of our meetings, no one has stood up and said, this has to, including-
I agree.
And no one even, I know we voted on it last month, but no one even had, I mean, even during the discussion last month, no one was as passionate as this discussion has been either, so, again, I, I mean-
Of course, my question with that though, Turtle, is how many people actually know that it's going on? Except the people, I mean, because the folks out here don't know what's going on until fairly late in the process, so I, I don't know how many people other than who we've talked to know that it's happening.
Sure, and that's, that's a fair point too, but, I mean, you know.
What would you wanna see done to make this project, you know, they got the flattened sidewalks, they got, you know, what, what do you wanna see done on this project to get it to move forward? Or you just don't want it, period?
I'm gonna stand on this fact. We voted on it last month, I'm very confused as to how we can vote on it again.
He's explaining.
I understand, and I-
Let me, let me, the, the-
I get it, I get it.
All the same, the same way we voted to stop it when the previous council had voted to pursue it and to do it.
But the-
We're doing it the same way.
The previous council started it.
Right.
And voted to start it. We voted to stop it, and we did not stop.
And I, and I really don't understand how we could do that.
Do what?
To vote to stop it.
So what-
After it'd already been started.
What do you wanna see happen to make this-
So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep talking about this.
Yeah.
So, why did we vote then if it didn't matter?
Well, I mean, I, I guess it, the, the only thing that we voted no, which then sent them the results, they countered with a different option. If we were okay with that option, then we might pursue it and go on, continue with it. But if nobody wants to accept their counter offer, then we'll stop it. I will, I will have a formal letter in the mail sent to them, stopping it.
Was the state notified of the outcome of that meeting?
Yes.
I would like to hear that.
Okay.
Informally, yes.
Informally?
Yeah.
Meaning it was just a phone call or a text message, it was nothing in writing. We don't stop projects based off of a phone call or a text message, it has to be a formal letter signed by the mayor.
Okay.
And, and a copy of the resolution of what, what the minutes were, so.
Sure.
So back to my question, what would you like to see done to make this project go forward? You got Gene's Body Shop fixed.
I have not spoken to him about this new thing, so I don't know if it affects his business positively or negatively, I do not know, and we're not allowed to talk to him right now, so.
I was told by Melinda that Freddie and Fene would be very happy if they flattened the sidewalk in front of their base.
That was in the beginning.
And if they could help Courtside, that would be great, but if not, as long as we could get it flat in front of Freddie's. And they've brought that to us.
And now, Pat is here, and I know she can't speak, but I'm sure I can speak for her, she wants hers flattened too. She's losing.
I mean, that's fair, I mean, that's, you can't show special treatment to one versus everyone else.
Yeah, but what if they flatten it, and then y'all come back and still say, well, such and such?
Well, if you go up the hill, I want it flattened in front of markets, I want it flattened in front of businesses, so it doesn't hurt the businesses.
We're not up there, you're hard.
No, we're not, it's apples and oranges, I know. It'd be great if we could take it off that main highway, put it down towards Criminal Justice Center where it was probably originally supposed to be.
It is going in front of the Criminal Justice Center.
Down beside it, and down Water Street, I mean.
So if we sent a proposal to T-Dot to flatten the sidewalk in front of Gene's Body Shop like you've talked about, and to flatten it by, in front of Courtside, would the council be in favor of that?
They all agree to that.
I would speak to the business owners first, just like I did before I made my vote last month. And I would, and it's not just them too, but we've been contacted by actual residents as well.
That's true.
It's not just, I mean, we can't put all the blame on Gene's Body, we turned it into a, we turned it into a Gene's Body Shop project, and I, I think it got barely, I mean, the only person that mentioned it last month was Mr. Freddie himself during the meeting. So it's not just a, I mean, we wanna talk about showing favoritism, when we're saying we'll change the project just for one person, and we should just pass it. I mean, that's not right either, right?
But that's what was asked of us. So we did what was asked of us.
It wasn't ju- not, one person asked us, yes, I agree. One person did ask for that. Again, the last proposal that I saw is the same one that's on that email right there, and he told me that that was not, that didn't change his mind one bit, so.
So are we gonna type this in the next meeting, or are we nearly within our criteria's, or are we gonna go forward with, I mean?
Every month we go, we're being charged.
Well, you, you want to give like thirty hundred something like that?
Well, I mean-
Okay, so it voted four to two, so I don't know why Melinda's getting-
I'm getting, I-
I don't know why everyone's looking at Melinda, there was four people that voted against it.
I have been bombarded by, uh, I am one vote, only one vote. I wanted to recuse myself, because, but I didn't, because I didn't have to, and take Freddie and Fene completely out of it, put Sweet Charlotte owning the body shop and them across the street, I'd do the same thing for him. Oh, come on, don't call me a liar, that's rude.
A little inappropriate, man.
Very much so. I do the same thing for him.
Okay, that's enough. I guess we need to make a motion to just go ahead and, and kill the project. I mean-
Mr. Mayor, I think that the proper motion, if you're going to, uh, either, you're either gonna defer it, table it, or you're gonna make a motion to rescind, uh, the, the prior motion to not proceed with the project. I think that's what's, or if there's no motion, then it just, it's, it is what it is.
Okay.
Do we just uphold the last one? I mean, if we say nothing today, does the last one come into effect?
The last vote is in effect, the last vote is in effect, um, as much as, obviously she indicated you, they require minutes, the minutes we get voted on at the next regular meeting, um, a formal letter, um, you ask why, as I understand it, when it was presented, they said, we're gonna offer you, suggest to you different options, so I think it was incumbent on the mayor and the office to present this to you all to see if you wanted to, to reconsider it, uh, but it's not necessarily a motion to reconsider, uh, it's a motion to rescind that vote, because yes, sir, you, you all did vote to not proceed with the project.
So if there's not a vote tonight, we still can end the project based off of the prior vote?
Yes, sir.
And I'm assuming Caleb and myself cannot make such a motion since we voted in the other way.
No, you can't.
In our, in all honesty, Mayor, the emotion for to rescind can be made by anyone. It was, this, this meeting was properly noticed, um, and so anybody can make a motion. It just depends on what's, what is the will of the law.
So you can make a motion to rescind it? I'll make a motion to rescind.
And I'll second it, because I, I wanna vote out there to be done one way or the other.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I repeat the motion?
Yeah.
I understand the, the, the story, you have made a motion to rescind the prior vote to, to not proceed with the project, so you're asking that that be rescinded?
So if you vote, if you vote yes, if you vote yes, you're saying you wanna rescind, and if you vote no, you're saying you do not wanna rescind.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other comments? Lee, I'll start with you. Leah, I'll start with you, how do you vote, yes or no?
I thought it was the one that made the motion.
Well, I mean, it is, but I just try, I was trying to keep it in line for Jennifer, that's it. But we can do, we can do it that a way.
Okay, so it's yes to...
To rescind.
No, to keep the vote.
So now I'm not in favor of the sidewalk, so that would be yes or yes and no?
It'd be no.
No, we'd no, right.
Josh is yes, Ricky?
No.
No?
No.
No?
Yes.
No!
Okay. All right. Motion passed, not rescind.
The motion, the motion did not carry now.
Did not carry, sorry, did not carry.
Two yeses, four noes.
Yeah.
Motion did not carry.
Okay. Well, anyway, that's, that's, that's all I've got. Well, I mean, is there any discussion on the jailhouse, old jailer's house?
I would like to make a motion to move it to the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Melinda's second.
Is it a motion to, to defer?
To defer to the next meeting. All right, we'll just, we'll go the, 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 the motion and the second, Turtle, you vote? Yes or no?
Yes. I'm surprised, yes, sir.
Caleb? Yes.
Yes.
Melinda, yes. Leah?
To table the, the discussion.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Josh, yes. Nikki, yes.
She's like, what am I voting on now?
Well, I do, and I think all of y'all probably know by the comments I made, I want to go on record stating that, that I'm for the sidewalk. I'm for the beautification of this little city. Uh, but, you know, I understand the majority didn't, didn't, it didn't pa, didn't pass, so we go with that. And so we'll have to wait till the minutes are approved next month and file a formal letter with... All right, that's all I have. Make a motion to adjourn. On the turtle?
I'll say.
Second, all in favor? All right. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You may be floating away, bro.